Thank you very much. Good morning. It's the eighteenth of April, nine o'clock, and it's the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, which is the third for this year. If I call attendance, obviously there's myself, councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner and councillor Milligan. When it comes to apologies, the CEO has called us, she will be here very shortly, so we'll wait for that. In the meantime, we do have a request for a meeting attendance via audio link. Councillor Nicole Johnick has requested attendance at the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee for today via audio link, and that in accordance with section 254k of the Local Government Regulations of 2012 and 9.6.2 of the council's meeting procedure policy, councillor Nicole Johnick be permitted to participate in the meeting via the audio link. Now, I'll move that. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Tully. Any discussion? Put it to the vote, those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Welcome, CEO. Right on. Also have a leave of absence here, and I request the leave of absence to be given to councillor Kunselman, who is not well. May I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Has anyone heard from the deputy mayor? No? Okay. Thank you. So I just want to check. Councillor Johnick, you're on the line?
I am.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. We'll now move on to acknowledgement of country. If the City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Morning, deputy mayor. I now seek to see if there are any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? None, thank you. We'll now move on to matters that are outstanding, and there are nil. So I move on to item one, which is the confirmation of minutes for the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, so I will move those. Do I have a second for that, thank you councillor Fekner? Any errors, omissions, corrections? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Move on to item two, which is the Waste and Secret Economy Transformation Directive Update Nine. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Brett Davy, manager City Design.
Morning, Mr Davy. Thank you very much. Thank you for this report. Obviously, it's a major policy for us to get a better outcome for the people of Ipswich. I note that the last joint task force meeting was in December twenty-two. When is the next meeting?
We haven't got a date set as yet, so...
Do you mind just keeping us up to date when that happens? Thank you. I know it's in the report, but I guess I'm looking at the attachment one, and it talks about the strong compliance culture. I note recently that the state government, the Department of Environment and Science, have issued or charged, claiming a number of offences by Cleanaway. I'm just looking at whether we should include it into that column there or not, because it is sort of meaning that the state...
Yes, we can. Yeah, we can note that as compliance action. The...
Which is great to see.
Yeah, it is great to see. It will be before the courts as well, so we just have to be mindful of the process it will go through, and it'll take a while, I'd say, to get through that process.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions, Mr Davy, does anyone else?
Thanks, Mr Davy. Just seeking a bit of an update on the progress on the MOU with Raikew and where we're at with that, noting that it's been a couple of years in the making?
Yes, it's been a while in the making, so we did receive, or did receive some feedback on the MOU from Raikew a couple of weeks ago now. I just have to get through it and come back to yourselves with a revised draft.
Are there any material concerns that they've raised with us to indicate?
No material concerns, no.
Miss councillor.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Noting that we're three years in to this really important piece of work that, you know, we as a new council put in place, when I'm looking at the programme of work that was developed as a result of the Waste Directive, and, you know, when we think about industry and other challenges, I'm just wondering, do we need to revisit any of our strategies? Are there any issues within the directive that you see as not being, you know, particularly helpful to the outcomes we're seeking? Just a general check-in, I guess, after three years. I do wonder if our strategy needs a slight change in direction?
Yep. Look, it's probably timely to do a stocktake of the programme, and particularly the elements of the directive, so I can put some thought to that and come back to you with some options, if you like.
Like a health check, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, no problems.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
No, I just want to make the observation and potentially seek your thoughts around a lot of the work hinging on our relationship with the Department of Environment and Science. You know, it's been difficult for us to actually, you know, diarise those meetings, and the information share hasn't exactly been perfect for the last twelve months. How do we see improving that relationship, you know, between, you know, now and the next state election? I mean, there's some serious work that needs to be done, and council needs to be involved and a seat at the table. So are there indications from the department that they don't want to proceed with the task force, or that they're not interested in keeping that open dialogue with us?
Not necessarily. It does prove troublesome with some of the particular compliance items end up in complex litigation, and then you end up in a almost a closed framework, but the desire from the state is certainly there to work together in a more collaborative way, and they're sharing what they can. So that's probably something I can take into consideration with this stocktake and look at, well, what are our options moving forward? And what's the strongest and best way for us to work collaboratively with the state? But the feedback from the state, at least in respect to the planning scheme and sharing coalface issues on waste compliance matters is good. But, yeah, I can put some more thought to that.
Through you, Chair, if I could add that I am in contact with the Directors General of the Department of Environment and Science and State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, as we three are joint chairs of the Joint Task Force. And so, as Mr Davy's indicated, DES is in the process, the DG of DES is in the process of setting up the next meeting. So we will add to the agenda of that meeting the fact that we're doing a stocktake on the directive and look to engage in that discussion about what they see as next steps and move forward from there, and we're happy to come back and report that to you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
I'd like to move that this is a, that this report is received and contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Milligan. Leading into discussion, I think that councillor Doyle, you have a very salient point in doing that health check after two and a half years, or nearly three years of this as well. I would like to see things progress quicker, but can I also state that how pleased I am that the, I realise it's a legal matter, but obviously DES have, you know, stepped up when it comes to Cleanaway with those twelve offences. I realise the fines won't be anywhere near the thirty-five million, that is the maximum, but it's good to see that that that's sort of telling waste operators that they need to operate within the law in Ipswich.
Yeah, I agree, Mayor, and just take the opportunity to thank the CEO, Mr Davy, and their staff for, you know, the amazing work they've been doing in delivering on our directive, noting that, you know, the Advanced Waste Directive, a lot of, most of the work has been reliant upon, you know, operational matters. And so when I think about a stocktake or revisiting our strategy, my mind goes to opportunities for advocacy for us as a group of elected reps, perhaps sitting down with our state and federal colleagues to see if we can help the work and effort internally by staff, and really understand the challenges that, you know, the state in particular are facing, no different, I guess, to us in this very difficult, complex industry of waste, meeting the needs of residents and taxpayers, but ensuring good, healthy outcomes for our local residents, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to acknowledge that the report was very honest in saying that there is a significant amount of resources that have been diverted to the development of the new planning scheme. So although things, you know, haven't been ticking over maybe as quickly as we want them to, or issues, you know, that we might have with the speed, I think that there are some allowances that we need to make. So I thank Mr Davy for his efforts in balancing both of those roles. And I just want to speak to, I guess, the comfort that's provided to the community within the directive. So it's not something that we necessarily report on or speak about much, but from my experience in working with people, particularly in the eastern suburbs of Division Three, who have grave concerns about, you know, the way that some of our waste operators, you know, are negatively impacting the environment and potentially their health, you know, our offices go a long way to providing open communication to the public in that way. When a request is raised with me or someone's inquiring in my office and I need to go to the department to seek advice, it's always quick and it's always reassuring, and I think the community finds a great amount of comfort in knowing that we are doing all that we can and sharing as much information as we possibly can. And I think that that's one of the unspoken benefits of this. I mean, we've got a great working relationship with, you know, our community in seeking better environmental outcomes in this space, so, yeah. I just wanted to thank our officers for that, and I'm really proud with how we've been able to deliver for our community on this one.
Thank you councillor Fekner. Any other comments? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Oh, sorry. Sorry councillor Johnick. Sorry about that. So it's unanimous from either of us. We now move on to item three, which is the Regional Planning Interest Act of 2014, Application twenty-two slash zero zero nine, Austral Bricks, Mount Walker, final response. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, City Development Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. Do you mind just sort of explaining, this is not an approval to actually do mining and what it's actually looking to do?
So this item has appeared before this committee and council not too long ago, where council provided an initial response, and the response is being provided with respect to an application for mining exploration activities, so clay mining exploration. What is being sought is to obtain approval to basically do some core drilling, so soil sampling essentially, up to twenty-five metres of depth roughly, in the locations shown in the report. So the initial response was provided with respect to that. The next step was public notification, which has occurred recently. So there was public notification, there were zero submissions received. And what is occurring after this step is we provide a final response, and then the minister assesses all the information that was provided during the lodgment, there's an information request type period, and then there's a final response. So what we're essentially providing comments, sort of like a referral, in a way like a referral agency, with a bounded assessment, being certain schedules under the Planning Interest Act. So we provide advice that this activity itself, the core hole drilling, is unlikely to have any impacts, because that is a fact, that's something that normally causes impacts, and it's unlikely to be something that will be endorsed by the community. But we also acknowledge that in a future application, clay mining in this locality is likely to have impacts. An application hasn't been lodged, and it isn't being sought at this time, but we're providing the department advice that we are likely to have more, you know, greater concerns about that type of activity in that location. So following this process, there's a decision period, and there's, similar with Planning Act applications, there's an appeal period. Then after that, if there's no appeal, and depending on the decision of the minister, they're able to carry out the works, as I said, which will be basically a you turning up with a, sort of like a soil testing drill in several locations, so, yeah.
And will they require permission from the landowner to go onto the property?
There's a, there's an arrangement, it's a little bit different to just getting permission. There's normally an arrangement, like sort of a compensation arrangement, I think it's called, where they have an agreement to, you know, access the site, and if there's materials, win the materials, so. But yes...
But landowners shouldn't find someone on their property without knowing beforehand.
Yeah, that's correct.
Councillor Ireland.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just a little bit concerned if we're given permission to go and, you know, drill, if they find the clay, we're going to get wedged if there's money involved for the farmer who wants to sell out the land. I'm just, you know, where does it leave council in the middle of all of this?
At the moment, we've highlighted that we are likely to have issues with a future mine application at this very early stage, before it's even lodged. So we've made our position clear that there are going to be impacts that will need to be managed if that does occur. The trouble that we have with identifying what those impacts are is we're not sure what the scale of the activity might be in the future. And the truth is, some clay mining activities are quite low impact and may actually be suitable, depending on all the variables that come about with the application that might come to council. So we can warn the minister that we have concerns, particularly with respect to the maintenance and upkeep of roads, but also noise and dust impacts on residents. Other than that, we just have to wait for the application to be lodged before we can genuinely make a statement or have concerns about it, because at this stage, there's a possibility that they will go out there and find nothing, and that will be the end of the matter. They may find material that is either suitable to be extracted or investigated further, and then we will start this whole process again. And, you know, I think our assessment of that proposal will be much more in-depth because of the complexities that come with that type of use. So I don't think we will be wedged or put in a position where we need to agree to anything. We made it really clear from the beginning that we have potential concerns about that type of use in that location. And I think what we need to do is wait and see what application is lodged and make a fair assessment of that once it's done.
I know you don't have to do it, Mr Bowles, but if an application come in, could the councillors have some say about how far they have to fix up the roads if they're going to actually mine? Because that's, for us, it's always the country roads that we just don't have the money to go and fix all the time.
I think we would have some ability to do those sorts of things. It would be a similar process to what we've done for this application, in that the councillors and the council itself will be giving, first of all, information required to be provided by the applicant, so the information requests, and also a final response. We've been a bit lucky in that we've had this test case to make an assessment under this act. They don't come up very often, they're very rare, to be perfectly honest. And one of the learnings we've had is that the timeframes are quite tight to provide comments from councils, so there may be some recommendations coming from me soon to perhaps have some subdelegation to make sure that we move all our timeframes, but I'm perfectly comfortable ensuring that all the councils are involved in those decisions, because it's a major sort of development that would normally, if it were coming through the development assessment process, I would imagine it would come to council anyway.
I appreciate we're discussing about something, a hypothetical, that may or may not happen in the future. But in a typical, something like this, would there also be manufacturing of bricks out there at the same place? Or would it just be looking at removing the clay and trucking it out?
At this point in time, I don't know. I don't need to be speculating, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, councillor Tully?
Thanks very much. I just have a query, and thanks for the information you've provided. In the conclusion section on page thirty-four of one thirty-four, it says the department has requested comments from council. Now, are they our comments, essential rather than their comments? It's saying that the exploration activity will, activities would comply with the regulation, but mining activities probably would not. Is that our position, rather than what's been intimated by the department?
That's our position.
Yeah. Okay. So to me, that seems like a very important consideration, certainly by the applicant and perhaps by the department or the minister. Would that very issue be raised in the response we're giving back to the department?
I intend to, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just the second question was in relation, you know, you talked about the clay, some clay mining might be fairly minor and not intrusive to adjoining areas. Can an approval be time limited, so that, you know, as development occurs in the future, that it's not an approval in perpetuity?
I would have to take that question on notice, as far as what the conditioning powers of the minister are with this particular type of application, certainly under development approval that we would be issuing, the council would be issuing, we would be able to do that. I can't say for a fact that that is the scope of the conditioning powers under this act, which are different to the Planning Act. So unfortunately, I'm not quite able to answer that. I could look at other examples to see if that's occurred, but unfortunately, I don't have the answer.
Well, perhaps, and this could be well down the track, I guess this exploration activity could take some considerable time, but it'd be handy to know in advance whether or not that could be time limited. Thank you.
No, no problems.
Just making sure your back question on notice. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fekner.
I'm just thinking about the letter and the tone. If we're going to include in the letter the last line of that conclusion there, that councillor Tully was alluding to earlier, would not be supported, would not be supported due to impacts of amenity and local infrastructure. Does that need to have an asterisk next to it? I mean, because if we're saying that as the local government, we're kind of indicating to our residents that we won't be supporting that, but there are instances where we actually might be supporting that.
I'm happy to make amendments to that, to that, of that nature. Again, I suppose just without the knowledge of the extent of the type of mining activity that could occur, it's a bit of an assumption, and a fairly safe assumption, that there would be impacts on the roads, for example. I think that's unavoidable, and that will occur because of the current state of the roads. So that one I can accept as likely to occur, and potentially something that we may not support unless if we have details of road upgrades or commitments to road upgrades. Noise and dust, as I said, depend on the scale, but in some of these locations, there are houses near enough that even on a small scale, they could be impacted. So it would depend on which property and the scale and what the road is. So there's a combination of factors where it's more than likely, at least something of those matters will be something that council would raise in a future application to be resolved and potentially not be able to be resolved. So certainly, it could be addressed by the applicant, and by all means, having heard that advice or seen that advice, they would be attempting to resolve those issues before lodging anything. And I think it's probably wise to start, you know, making it clear that that's a serious matter for council to be resolved before even lodging the application. So that's the reason why I've made it that way, but I'm happy to temperate if needed.
I think page thirty-three sort of outlines, in particular, those two dot points that, you know, this paper is saying that you'll go back to them, which I felt very comfortable with, because it's sort of talking about the, just highlighting the potential issues.
Through the minute, I would support it going as it is, because country roads for us, we just can't keep up with the repairs or the work on them.
So I'd just make sure we're not in discussion, because we haven't been moved and secureded. So if there are any more questions for Mr Bowles, then we...
One more. In relation, that's a very good point that's been raised by councillor Fekner about the council virtually voting in advance to say that it won't approve or agree to something. I wonder if that could be resolved if it said would not be, would not be likely to be supported. Yeah, to give that proper legal flexibility, that no final decision has been made.
I guess we don't know until the matter comes to us.
No, but I think, no, it's part of the conclusion, and that based on the advice we have, it looks as though that in the ordinary course of events, depending upon the exact nature of an application, that it's not likely to be supported. I think we've heard already, it could be based on the size, the operation, the hours, the length of time, the proximity of other premises, but I think that councillor Fekner's raised the point that the council perhaps shouldn't be advising in advance before it's made a formal decision.
So do you have a suggestion on that final paragraph, to that final sentence?
Yeah.
Instead of what would not be supported?
Would not be likely to be supported. I think I'd be, I'd be very comfortable with that, because that probably is the likelihood.
Now, that's a long paragraph in that final, that conclusion, that final sentence? I think, is it, do you want to move that as...
It's not part of the recommendation, so...
So we should add it as a recommendation, yeah.
But, yeah, perhaps if we get an indication from the officer that that would be included as part of the response to the department, I'd be satisfied.
Okay, so maybe when we move into the moving in secondary, as the chair and deputy chair, we could put that in as a recommendation?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
That's fine, no problems at all.
And the other, just... Any other questions, Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
Before I knew that, I think we're looking at potentially having moving recommendation, A being one that is there at the moment, the council authorised the CEO to provide a final response to the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, and that B, I guess to amend the final paragraph of the conclusion, or do you have a suggestion?
The letter hasn't been drafted, so we're...
So it's, I think B would need to just speak to, so A is obviously authorising the chief executive officer to provide the final response, and you would assume it's in accordance with the report that's been provided to us. So B would be that final response will make it clear that no decision, however, has been made, something along those lines.
Yeah, I think we need to be specific to say that the response incorporate advice that any future mining activities are not likely to be supported due to the impacts of amenity and road infrastructure. I think that would probably, and would cover other things as well, but that... I think that would probably, and would cover other things as well, but that covers the very point that we've been speaking about.
Thank you. Well, as the chair and I think as deputy, I'm happy to move that, you're happy to second A and B? Thank you. Thank you. I'll now open it up for discussion so we can have a discussion. I think councillor Ollins has been wanting to say something.
Thank you, ma'am. I was just saying that the road infrastructure out there, we now know that Ebeneze is going to be the final port of inland rail.
That decision hasn't been made yet. It's a recommendation, yeah.
But with all the traffic, it's going to be on the Cunningham Highway, and the country roads aren't going to handle the traffic, heavy traffic, if people are taking other roads to get out of Willowbank area. I'm really concerned if there's another heavy mining industry out there, that's all.
Thank you very much. Other discussion, yes councillor?
Yeah, I'll just speak to that recommendation B and provide further context. You know, we could be in a situation where we're looking down the barrel of an approval and we still have people who are opposed to the mining activity. So us going on record now saying that we wouldn't, that we wouldn't support it in any form and then going against that later could open us up to criticisms from residents who might still be, you know, against that particular decision. So, yeah, just, I mean, and I guess the discussion today, CEO, you're aware that that's a sentiment in the room. So I trust that you'll draft the letter accordingly.
I guess my views are, is obviously it depends what the activity will be in the future, if there is a future DA. Depends what the activity is. You know, we do talk about having a housing shortage. We do need bricks to build, you know. A lot of houses build with bricks, so they need to be made somewhere. So I guess it depends what happens with what the landowner and what the, what to say in the future. But the two dot points here on page thirty-three, I think that the, that this report says is going to be put forward to the department, which states that the subject sites are predominantly within the rural A and B zones. The relevant planning scheme for the rural areas seeks to maintain the rural amenity. There are concerns relating to potential impacts to the amenity of existing residents and nearby tourism users. And the second dot point says that the existing road infrastructure will be heavily impacted by any future mining uses with upgrades likely to be required. In addition, there are concerns relating to proposed haul routes, especially through or near existing residential areas. So I felt that those two dot points covered things quite well for us as advice to the state.
Yeah, I'm aware and I've read the report and you've stated that twice now. But the point that we're all making here on this side of the table is that we don't want to go on record as councillors saying it is not going to be supported. That's categorically not supported. It just needs to be a little bit more open-ended than that and taken into consideration, those.
Thank you. Yes, councillor?
I think that this, if we say it's not likely to be supported, the only next step is that it's going to be refused or not supported. So I think in the circumstances that we cover that concern that people might be misled if we said that, you know, it won't be supported and for reasons that you've enunciated, you know, some limited form of development there, you know, might be supported if it didn't have a major effect on the environment or the community. So I'm happy with that wording, that at least shows that we as a council will perform our statutory duty if there is a future application.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We move on to item four, which is the revised framework for development applications and related activities policy. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles, and thank you for this. I think it's always good to revise policies and see how they fit in. And it's one I did email yourself and I guess the deputy on the weekend. But in regards, so I guess on page thirty-four, there talks about page four, clarification on decision-making for a change of an approval decided by council. And I was asking for a recent one. The only one I could think of was probably Carroll House, where because it came to council, if there were any condition changes, it came back to council. I thought that was quite good. If these changes are made, would that not happen?
Not quite, not necessarily. So the current framework doesn't deal with that particular circumstance specifically. And the practice has been if the council makes a decision and we receive change representations, which essentially leads to a negotiated decision notice, that we come back to council. And we haven't had a major issue with that. We don't actually receive a large number of change representations because we have processes that are actually described in that policy, particularly the draft conditions process, which sort of deals with it in a way that doesn't require it to occur through the act. It's just much more efficient to do it that way. So the circumstances where we receive them aren't that frequent. So what is attempted here is in the circumstance that we may receive one in an application that has been decided by council, if the matter is inconsequential or minor, that the process would be to seek direction from the divisional councils and the mayor as to whether that can be decided by delegation or returned to council. So in the example provided in Carroll House, there's two pathways. It can be decided by the officers, but the alternative is to be decided by council if that is what has been sought. So that direction will be sought before anything is done. So we receive the change representations, we would seek direction from the mayor and divisional councillors as to whether that is considered minor and consequential and should be decided by the officers. Otherwise, if the view isn't held that it's minor, if it's considered to be important, then it'll come back to council as we normally would do.
And would that decision be minuted and put on development I as well?
That's right. All change representations would appear on development I. Alternatively, it would be part of the council decision reporting framework that we already have for these decisions if it were to return to council. So Carroll House being one example, there may be more examples in the future where we have something that is genuinely minor. But we've already got a process in place to prevent it from happening in the first place. But of the changes, that's the only real major, what's called procedural change, that it isn't a update and tidy up of the policy.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Like councillor Tully has one?
Yeah, thank you. It's on that point as well. And I refer specifically to page four of nine of the report, but page forty-four of one thirty-four of what's before us today, the entire meeting, up about, towards the top, that if the application or request, oh, sorry, if the request relates to a change or extend the council approval, et cetera, et cetera. So use of the word direction, which has a particular meeting under the Local Government Act, that councillors can't do that. I make a suggestion that when we're back into, when it's moved, that we perhaps put the word consideration there rather than direction because that's sort of a no-no to use a layperson's term. The mayor might have the power to do that, but councillors don't.
I do have a power to direct the council, yes.
I do accept that feedback. Thank you for that.
Yeah, so I'll propose that when we, well, the mayor himself proposed that when we move into, when we consider the report formally.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As it is, and obviously we can look at whether we should do any changes. Do I have a second for that, councillor Tully? Thank you. I guess I'd like to discuss with councils about that particular clarification. So my concern is if, you know, if councillors, if something's deemed minor by council officers and they just speak to the council officers, councillors, the divisional councils and the mayor, making sure how is that done in an open, transparent way is what I'm looking at rather than just, I know publishing the discussion on development I is an open way, but I guess I'm open for discussion on what the councils like to do.
That's a good point. The applications I've seen over the years, some of the requests for changes to conditions are what you'd call extremely minor, like there might be a requirement for a five metre wide easement and because of the positioning of trees or boundaries or whatever, the most they can get is four point nine metres. Most cases where it's extremely minor would be really obvious. The Carroll House one, we did actually make changes to the officer's recommendation. That's why, this gives us the opportunity to review each of those. And I think most of it is pretty much common sense if it's very minor. Yeah, it wouldn't have to go through to a full council meeting if they, because those minor changes are being made with the approval of officers in all other cases, which haven't gone to committee or council anyway. So I assume the process is there that that's fully documented and available to the public. So I'm comfortable with that and, yeah, subject to that change in that paragraph to change the word consideration, direction to consideration, which I mentioned before. So I might move that as an amendment, that the word...
I guess what I'd look at, what would be considered minor, like just over the Carroll House, with the footpath, did council see that as a minor issue or for us it was quite a significant issue?
That'd shake out.
Well, not significant, but it wasn't a minor issue.
If it's an internal footpath, it might be considered relatively minor. I've never found over the years that that's been a particularly onerous or difficult determination that it's in the whole scheme of things. It's usually fairly clear that if it's minor and doesn't require, you know, especially if we're trying to resolve these requests quickly rather than waiting three or four weeks for, yeah. I think in practice, it's pretty obvious to councillors if something is genuinely minor. But if people think it's not, well, the process changes.
Yeah. Open up for any other discussion?
Was your specific question to us for the purposes of discussion around how we want that to be shared with the public? Those discussions or decisions that are made by the mayor and divisional councillors in those instances?
Well, to me, I would be moving a recommendation that whatever, if there's a meeting or discussion, that absolutely those minutes need to be, to me, tabled on development I because that's a discussion and that's part of the process.
I mean, historically, and I've seen some previous planning decisions before our time, where the divisional councillors and the relevant committee chair, Paul, which was you at the time, were notified by email and that's all captured in the chain. So the divisional councillors or the chair would indicate, yes, I support or no, I don't, and it needs to come to council. And that email trail is probably okay as well, rather than the burden of organising a meeting, minuting that meeting, then uploading that, more like flying minute, you know, and just being able to upload that chain.
As long as it's...
It worked in the past.
That worked. And I think this would allow that approach, like an email that just asks not for an approval but for a sign-off or, you know, seeking the views. And if the views are that it's a minor matter that can be considered and dealt with by officers, well then, those responses can be properly minuted and, you know, out of the public domain.
Okay. Based on that paragraph that you talked about on page forty-four, councillor Tully, looking at changing that word direction, so and seeking...
To consideration.
So may we ask for, I don't know how you should write that up, Vicky. So it's... Thank you. On page, other than page of the report, it's actually page four of attachment one. I'd say it puts the policy, yeah, because it's actually page forty-four of the report. Or we'll have the dot point that starts with if a request to change or extend an approval, yeah. Okay. So if we could have the sentence or the dot point that starts with if a request to change or extend an approval was originally decided by committee or full council and then I guess change that word dot direction to consideration. If a request to change or extend an approval that was originally decided by committee or full council is received. I think just leave it, that's the only dot point I can see on that page that starts with that sentence.
Could I just be a bit technical that we, currently, that paragraph doesn't commence with that? We're voting on to actually change that. It actually currently reads if the application or request. Maybe the, if we say, I don't know. Look, can I suggest this?
Maybe the third dot point, the third dot point on that page.
Yeah, but the word direction only appears once on that page, so now that I've checked through. So I think that would cover it to remove the word, leave the word direction and put in consideration. Either way, I'm happy.
And I guess this, it will be coming to the ordinary council meeting next week, so we'll see it then as well, I guess. I think so, yes. I think councillor Tully, you had a, you were stating that that's the only time on the page that direction is mentioned?
Can't see the word direction anywhere else on that page. So I think that puts it beyond doubt, you know, where the amendment is occurring.
Thank you. So as the mover of this, I'm happy to, so we put that as B. So we'll have recommendation A is that that council, the current recommendation, the current motion before us is that council adopt the framework, and then B is to change that word. I'm happy that councillor Tully, obviously, as the mover, as a second, I suppose.
Thank you, you are accepted.
Thank you. I'll open back up for any discussion. Yes, yes, deputy mayor?
Look, I'm not going to propose any changes today, but just if everybody could take the fortnight to think about it. I think directly calling out divisional councillors, whereas many other instances refer to councillors having a citywide responsibility, I think we should all probably review that. So under certain provisions, all councillors are, you know, meant to make decisions in the best interest of the entire city. So calling out divisional councillors with an extra level of engagement on something like this, I'm unsure if I'm comfortable with that. I'll take a fortnight to continue to review that. I'll obviously talk to you more if I think we should go down that path. Just wanted to foreshadow where my mind was at.
That was, mayor, if I may, through you, the, when I read that, it says all divisional councillors. Well, that could have two interpretations. It could mean all ten on every occasion or it could mean the relevant divisional councillors, which is an expression used elsewhere to make that abundantly clear if councillors want that. It'd just take out the word divisional because later on, in the last sentence of that dot point, it says if the mayor or any councillor, it doesn't say any divisional councillor, so...
Yes, because I'm a councillor, but I'm a divisional councillor.
Yeah, but you're covered by the word mayor. So if that's an issue, I'd be happy to propose to take out the word divisional to make it clear and that all councillors, it could become a bit wieldy, but that's the point. Previously, all councillors have been involved in the original decision. So I think that's the difference in this particular case, that if we did take out the word divisional, and just to test the support for that, I'll move that in that, that the word divisional be removed from that dot point.
For that same paragraph, from that very same paragraph? Thinking, and just do capital C for councillors. Councillor Tully, is it? I'll just double check that. Yep, okay. So we're both, okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, deputy mayor. Okay, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much, councillor Johnic. Moving on to item five, which is a personal tribute in council's open space or road network. There's an assessment of an application here, and the recommendation is that the personal tribute is noted in the application, dead on attachment one, be approved by council. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? In that case, I will move this motion. Do I have a second for it? Thank you, councillor Fickner. I'll move out now into open discussion. I note that this is a second application. I think last year we agreed to, um, approve a personal tribute for Mr Hendrick, um, in Narromah Gardens, and this is, uh, an application for a second tribute for another asset. Any discussion? No. Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous in the chambers. How do you vote, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Item six is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report for February of twenty twenty-three. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No, in that case I will move it. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Doyle. We'll now move into discussion. I guess first discussion goes, I can see that obviously we've had a, a few things, um, slip as we obviously go out to market getting tenders, um, and also do note the, the rising costs of, of tenders when they come in as well as construction costs, um, increase as well. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item seven, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. May I have the relevant council officer come to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr Bowles. Um, just wondering how the matter with Landtrac, Klinway BMI is progressing. Obviously, the hearing concluded on the thirteenth of August, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, still awaiting the judgment on the, the waste appeals. I do actually have a bit of an update, uh, for the judicial review.
Yes.
Uh, so there is, um.
So that's on the one less?
Uh, yes, the one less application. So, uh, it'll be listed for a hearing regarding, um, part of the original stay. Uh, so some, the original order has had a stay on the minister making a decision on the, um, actual application itself that's subject to the judicial review. So, um, there's been a request to remove that particular part of the order. Um, so that'll be going to a hearing, I think on the twentieth. Um, so that, what the, the purpose of that hearing will be to determine whether or not they can, first of all, take that part of the order off and if, if that order is successful or that request is successful, then the minister will be able to decide the ministerial designation, um, while the judicial review continues.
And who has initiated that request?
Uh, the application, I believe, came from the state. I'll have to check. I think that's where it came from.
So the state's asking that they can still make a decision?
Essentially.
Wasn't the whole idea to?
Well, that, we, we were one of the parties making the application to prevent that from occurring. Uh, so, so I'll just get the application itself.
So I'm not a lawyer, but obviously there's a judicial review in place, just, and that's to say, has, has the process been followed? And in the meantime, the state have asked, can they still make a decision while the review's underway?
E- essentially, yeah, that's right. So, yeah, the application was from the state. Um, and, and, and basically it's to take an order off, an, a, a original essential, essentially like a series of things that must occur, uh, and that was that the minister must not make an up, a, a decision on this part of the application. And the argument being that, um, despite the judicial review occurring, the, the planning act processes are still able to be carried out. Um, so there'll be a hearing on that and all the, the arguments for and against that position will be heard. So that is an update. That is something that has, has occurred. Um, and is probably of note. Um, and it'll be, it'll appear on the next report as it only just occurred recently.
When is the hearing?
Uh, I believe it's the twentieth of April, so it's coming up very soon.
Oh, yes. On Thursday?
Yes, yep. Uh, I'll just check that, make sure that's the case. Might have to actually get that off the website, but I believe that's what I've got down here.
Thank you. Let's see, I'll let you get back to me. Uh, may I ask about, um, the Axolombe Capital Number Three versus British City Council, which is on one four six Sidons Road. It says that there was a, without prejudice discussion for the thirtieth of March. Am I able to inquire how that went or was that confidential?
That's, unfortunately, that's confidential. We'll have to go and close session. But in terms of an update, there is a review on the twenty fif- twentieth of April.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to have any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you, councillor. You've got your spring light.
Thanks, mayor. Uh, just one question on page one one six of one thirty-four. Uh, this is the applicant Spring Lake Holdings as trustee for Spring Lake Trust. Um, and there's an appeal on. It's just the last, second last line under status. It's got, the name is being appealed by Springfield Land Holdings, which is a different name from the, uh, it's called Spring Lake Holdings. Like, uh, uh, Springfield Land Holdings is very close to Springfield Land Company, the old SLC. They're, they're not party to this appeal.
Uh, no, I'll have to check on that. I don't think that's correct. I think it is meant to be Spring Lake Holdings.
So that, yeah, okay. So you think?
Because that is, yeah, that.
Yes, yes, I assumed that it probably was, but it's.
It, it might have been a, a bit of a slip there. I'll have to check that. Uh, but there is an update for that. It's listed for a hearing on the, um, eleventh of August. So, um, that, that may not progress later this year.
Okay. Eleventh of August, twenty twenty-three. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr Bowles, item one with cheap stays versus the council. Obviously, it's the one where council, because there was obviously, um, they wanted to build in a flood area. The councillor's sensibly saying no. Um, how did that go? It says it was listed for review on the fourteenth of April.
Uh, there has been an adjournment till the twelfth of May. So that, that occurred just the other day.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? No. Thank you very much, Mr Bowles. Probably appreciate that. So I'll move that the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report be received and contents noted. Do I have a seconda for that, councillor Tully? Thank you. Open for discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item eight, which is the exercise of delegation report. Does anyone have any questions for council officers on this one? No. In that case, I'll move that the exercise of delegation report for the period, the twenty-first of February, twenty twenty-three, to the twenty-seventh of March, twenty twenty-three be received and the contents noted. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's passed. There are no notices of motion. Um, as a rising, I'll call because it's four minutes to, to ten. Um, so I'll, I'll move a motion to revise that the, what time the next meeting will commence. So, um, deputy mayor, will I say ten thirty? Would that be okay for the next meeting? Thank you. So I'll have you as a seconda. Put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous in the room. Uh, councillor Johnic, how do you vote? Thank you very much. Uh, we have no procedural, uh, motions, so the meeting is ending at nine fifty-seven. We'll see you back at ten thirty.